The City Marine City Virtual City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, November 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Can we have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson. Commissioner Bryson here? Commissioner Hendrick?
Here.
Commissioner Callahan?
Here.
Commissioner Clausen?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Mayor Verkaman?
Here.
City Manager Levin?
Here.
Commissioner Bryson, are you there? Okay.
Maybe he'll come in later.
With the, Bob Davis here, with the roll call, we really, on the initial roll call, we really should be making the statement that we're here and we're participating remotely and we should state that we're in such and such county and in the state of Michigan. Those are in the law now.
Okay.
You want everyone to state that, then, Bob?
Yeah, could we do the roll, not on every roll call, though, just on the initial roll call, state your name, that you are participating remotely, and where you're at.
Okay. Commissioner Bryson, are you there?
I am here. I am participating remotely in St. Clair County.
Well done, sir.
Commissioner Hendrick?
I'm participating remotely in St. Clair County.
Commissioner Callahan? Commissioner Callahan?
I am here and I am participating remotely in St. Clair County.
Commissioner Clausen?
I am here and I am participating in St. Clair County.
Commissioner Ross?
I am here and I am participating remotely from my home in St. Clair County.
Mayor Verkaman?
I am here. I am participating remotely in St. Clair County.
City Manager Levin?
I am here, participating virtually and from St. Clair County.
Good. Good. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
We do have a couple proposed changes to the agenda. First of all, because we're not in person and can't take a look at the closed session meeting minutes, we'd be looking to remove that from the agenda tonight. We also have a request from the chamber for a couple of items to be added to the agenda regarding Maritime Christmas.
Lisa Hendrick, where do you want to put those?
We could put them in new business.
So that would be item 10F?
Yeah, you could do it as one agenda item.
So can I have a motion to approve the, tonight's agenda with the additions for 10F?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments presented.
Support Bill Clausen.
Commissioner Ross made the motion.
Thank you. Now's time for public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please. Okay, sorry, we got to go back. We need to do a vote on the approval of tonight's agenda with the changes.
Would you like me to restate my motion? This is Brian.
No, we're good. I just need to, all in favor for that, for the approval of tonight's agenda, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. City Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary.
This is CTV, we still are not recording. I cannot, I do not have permission.
I thought I already gave you the permission.
Can you hear that, Paul? Maybe you should text him, Elaine.
We've got it recording.
Folks, while we're waiting on this, and I don't mean to be an administrative pain in the butt, but every, every time there's a vote on anything, it has to be a roll call vote.
Because we're doing it remotely?
Yes, yes, that would be true.
Okay. So you want me to go back to approving the agenda?
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Okay. So we were at public comment? No comments?
Laura Scatia here.
Okay, hi Laura.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I would like to, well, I'm here talking on behalf of the Marine City Chamber of Commerce and just wanted to let everybody know that unfortunately, we have decided to cancel the parade. There was a lot of factors that led up to that decision, but I do believe there will be still Santa coming to town, so that's something that'll be, I guess, talked about later. I have requested, I've submitted a letter to the Commission and to the mayor for some changes to Maritime Christmas, which I'm really hoping that we can get approval for. We're trying to modify this event to help with our businesses, especially our restaurants who have been hit hard again with COVID. So we've come up with some creative things, and so I just want you to know that I am here, and if you have any questions when you get to that point, I'm here to answer them.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to approving of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes as of November 5th, 2020?
Lisa Hendrick, so moved.
Support Bill Clausen.
So instead of me saying all in favor, I've got to do a roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes, did anybody ask if anybody had any upgrades?
Any questions, comments, or discussion?
Well, any changes? Otherwise, I'm a yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Aye.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So the motion to approve the City Commission closed session, we're moving that, you said? Are we moving that?
That's being removed from the agenda.
Yeah, we're tabling that to a future meeting, so when we can meet in person again and review those is when we'll get that back on the agenda.
Right, right, okay. All right, moving on. On the consent agenda, we have the following items. Monthly activity reports, the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, the Pension Board Annual Report, and the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes as of October 12th, 2020. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and I'm going to need a roll call vote on this?
Lisa Hendrick, move. Support.
So we're going to need a roll call vote on all that, correct?
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Aye.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Going down to financial business, I need a motion to approve expenditures including payroll for $229,806.77.
This is Wendy Callahan. I make a motion that we approve expenditures, including payroll for $229,806.77.
Support Bill Clausen.
Does anybody have anything to discuss about the expenditures? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to financial business 8B, we have a resolution number 012-2020, Special Assessment for Delinquent Account. This is for crop cleanup invoice and the water sewer construction. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
This is Jacob Bryson. I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 012-2020.
Support Bill Clausen.
Anybody have any discussion on this? And I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross? Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving down to unfinished business, the dangerous building of 209 West Boulevard. Elaine?
So at our last meeting, we had the owners of the property and the building official discussing the property and its status, and one of the things that was requested from City Commission was to make sure that we get a copy of the engineering report in the office to verify whether the foundation is solid enough to be able to be rebuilt upon, and that was received by the building official and taking a look at it. He has issued a building permit based on that information, and one of the other things that they were required to provide was some type of schedule moving forward. They have been working with interstate restorations, and they have ordered trusses that should be on the site middle of December, and I guess replaced within about a week. I did speak with the Commissioner earlier and voiced some concerns on that. However, this is their proposed schedule, and based upon everything that the building official has done, the responsibility is on them to be able to build it on the schedule. If they do not start moving on this in the schedule, this is something that can be put back on the agenda at a future meeting. We're not looking for any motion or anything at this point. Yeah.
I know it wasn't the last meeting, maybe it was the last meeting, my memory is foggy. We, I think we put off asking them for a mold report until the structural report came back, so we didn't want to have them waste their money, you know, paying for a mold report if the structural report came back as being bad. But since it's good, do we need to ask for that to make sure we, there's not any mold abatement that needs to happen?
I know Tracy has had conversations with them, and one of the things that he had mentioned at the meeting is that he had pumped in there and that the space has not been wet, which I think was Tracy's assumption going into this. Don't know where they stand with the issue of mold, but that's something, if you guys do want to make a motion to have them get a mold report as well, that's certainly something that you could do.
I mean, I would just ask Tracy what, you know, what he recommends, since he's been the one that has eyeballs on it. If he thinks it's a good idea, then I think we should revisit it. If he says it's fine, then let it pass.
Well, ultimately, with them having a building permit, it's going to have to meet all of the codes anyhow, so if there is an issue with that that does not meet code, he won't be able to move forward with the building permit unless he does something to abate it.
Okay, I'm not trying to make them, you know, jump through extra hoops, I just want to make sure that, you know, we do our part.
Elaine, this is Lisa.
Yeah.
All right, I went around the building. I guess first off, is the engineering report strictly for the foundation?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And I looked around the building there in the front, and that there's still a lot of good-sized cracks in it, but I guess my question is, looking at the structure itself, there's so much burnt at the headers and some of the beams and all that, I'm assuming they're going to do all that before they put a whole new roof on there, because some of those walls are in question because of the, how much is burnt through on them?
Whatever they do, it's going to have to meet building code, and certainly Tracy is going to be on top of it and making sure that they do whatever it takes to make that building meet the code.
Okay, so they, so they didn't get a structural engineer for the structure itself, they only did the foundation?
That's my understanding. I have not looked at the report. I'm not a building official, it probably wouldn't even resonate with me since I don't know what to look at, but Tracy is comfortable enough moving forward that he issued a building permit.
Okay.
So I think if, if things are not satisfactorily moving forward, we can certainly bring this back on the agenda in January.
So we're going to move on to 9B, which is the siding change on 260 South Parker Street. Elaine?
So I did have the colors to bring back again to our subcommittee and the full board. One of the issues is that the availability of the color that we picked is, it's not available in the specific type that we picked. Now, there is an upgraded type that's a little thicker and wider, a little wider, and it is that same color, and the extra cost is $2,585. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve that additional cost for the siding.
This is Jacob Bryson. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the additional cost of $2,585 for the Pacific Blue siding.
Okay, we've got a motion and support. We're going to need a roll call vote, correct?
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to requests for proposals, 260 South Parker Street. Elaine?
Yeah, so I have worked with a number of people to draft a request for proposals for construction manager, general contractor for the renovation of 260 South Parker. I feel that I have all of the relevant information in there. I did highlight the more notable items in here, including the dates and what it is that we're particularly asking for. So what, what I have put in this RFP is that we're asking for a lump sum bid for the project, and then also including the components of the baseboard heating, which at one point in time was considered an alternate. The pricing that we saw for that was only $1,500, so it just seemed to make sense to include that. And then separate costs for the alternate one for the ventilation system, and then not building out room 113, that was the room in the front that we're just going to plum for a future bathroom. As far as the dates that I worked out, these are pretty much the most aggressive dates that we can work on right now. One of the constraints that we're kind of looking at is that the RFP, we need to have an opportunity to be able to get it out to the public, we need to have an opportunity for them to be able to visit the building, and then we also need to have an opportunity for them to be able to put the time and effort into put together an educated and well-thought-out bid number for us. Based on everything that's going on with COVID, I'm not sure if you want to move forward with this aggressive schedule or maybe change it at all. We can still, I think, meet all of this, subject to our meeting schedules that we have, so I would open up to any questions you might have regarding this.
This is Bill Clausen. I'd like to know, you just said you're putting the heating, the electric heating back in? I thought we took that.
No, we're going with the side cost for the alternate. So the alternate is that ventilation air system and insulation, insulation for the attic space.
Okay, but we're not putting the electric back in?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not doing another furnace unit.
I think it's because it says you got baseboard heating in here.
Yeah, baseboard heating, it was, I think, really the more responsible thing to do because, as you know, we have several people with the heaters and we had conversation about that, the, a built-in unit, especially given the cost incremental, that it really made sense just to spend the extra $1,500 and have those baseboard units in the offices.
And $1,500, is that for Bill Clausen? Is that, is that for each office space? Because it has to be wired for it, doesn't it?
The plans for the base plan had everything all wired because the wiring was already there. The $1,500 is really just, I think, the cost of the units. I think there are maybe five or six units.
So that 15 is times five?
I'm not sure exactly how many units, but it's, it's for just the units, and it, and like I said, because the quotes that they got, or the bids that they got, were only $1,500 for the alternate, it just made sense to keep that in there.
I think the point he's trying to make is, is the 1,500 for all five units, Lisa Hendrick?
All units, however many there are. It includes all the units, yes.
This is Lisa Hendrick again. On your first page, under the first part of schedule, it says Representatives of the City with, it should be will.
Thank you.
I don't see any problem with the aggressive schedule. They haven't shut down on the contractors yet.
This is Jacob Bryson. I think we push forward, and if it, we fall short, we fall short, but at least we try.
Yeah, for some reason, things get shut down and we can't carry through with this. At some point, we can still pick it back up and move forward.
Right. Yeah, Lisa Hendrick again. Yeah, that's a different issue. I mean, at this point, it's not shut down, we should just move forward and then we'll deal with that as it comes.
Yeah, I agree.
So then, I guess I would be looking for a motion to submit this request for proposals out to the public.
Lisa Hendrick, I'll make the motion that we request for a written proposal of the construction contractor renovation of 260 Parker to begin.
Bill Clausen, support.
Okay, can we have, we have a motion on the floor. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going on to new business. We have a City Commission appointment. This is because of a vacancy left by me, it's going to be a two-year term, and I'd like to table this till our next meeting, which we'll discuss further in. I'd like to look at all those people that applied, have them come into our next meeting, whenever that is, and then City Commission can ask a few questions, and we can do like a small interview with them prior to us voting on their, on their seat. So I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting in December sometime.
This is Wendy Callahan, support. Oh, sorry.
Keep in mind that you do have to make an appointment within 30 days, so that next meeting would have to be before December 19th, so we still have scheduled meeting for December 3rd and December 17th.
Correct.
Lisa Hendrick, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we going to allow anybody else, because I know the reason why you got some late ones, from my understanding, is because people didn't see this, so are you going to allow anybody else to apply before the, that date?
I don't understand how somebody cannot see it. It was, it was, it's been out there.
Well, not everybody's Facebook, you know?
It's not Facebook, it's also, it was on the city website, correct?
Well, unless you watched the meeting, you wouldn't know.
It's also, it was on the website, so if somebody's that interested in city government, they should be looking at our website.
Wow, that's, who was that?
Well, it's too bad it doesn't work that way, but whatever.
Who was that?
That's the mayor.
So I'd like to table this until our next meeting, and the three applicants that, you know, we'd like to invite them to the next meeting and, and do an interview and make our decision.
You need support?
I think Wendy made a motion, correct?
Yes, this is Wendy Callahan, I support that.
So you have a motion from Cheryl and support from Wendy, so I guess at this point...
Okay, I need, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to elect Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to...
I just filled the two lines on the bottom, and I did...
I just go through two lines on the bottom, and I didn't hand in no resume or nothing.
Well, they didn't hire nobody.
No, I know. Because Lisa, she wanted more time, maybe...
I'm sorry, we have an open mic. If you, if this is a public listening, if you could mute yourself. So I'm on to electing mayor pro tem, and I'd like to make a motion to elect Jacob Bryson as my mayor pro tem.
You looking for support?
Yes, please.
I'll support if needed. This is Commissioner Ross.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes, I'm confused, though.
Confused about what, Bill?
The mayor making the motion. I thought somebody else had to make the motion.
No.
Okay.
So what's your vote?
I already said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to planning commission liaison appointment. We have two. Two, we have Bill Claussen and Brian Ross. I need a motion to appoint.
Wow.
All right. Can I say something?
Who is this?
Bill Claussen.
Sure.
Because I'm sitting on the board now, and at the last planning commission, I brought that to the board and asked them, and I think the, I think our lawyer said that he was going to have me stay on it. If I was willing, I would, I didn't know if he wanted to do it, their recommendation or not. So, go ahead.
Commissioner Claussen, I did not really understand what that was. You say, yes, you are, are you making a motion for yourself? Because you can do that.
I guess I'll make a motion to Bill Claussen.
You can do that.
Okay.
You just can't second it, Bill.
Lisa Hendrick, I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, we've got, we've got a motion and a second, so I need a roll call vote then to appoint Bill Claussen as our planning commission liaison.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to goals of the city commission, city manager. Elaine?
I think that this is probably something that we can work on at a future meeting, but I provided the information for all the board members of our current goals and priorities. This is something that was worked on with the St. Clair County Planner. I think everyone should kind of take a look at this and think about if there are any of these goals that maybe no longer are a goal or no longer feasible, and also take a look at the strategic planning information and our master plan, and think about what other potential goals. I know we've got some new people on the board that probably were not a part of this. I think bringing it at a future meeting, ideally when we can all be in person to be able to really talk about this, would be more beneficial, but if it has to be, we can do it certainly by Zoom. And then one other thing to consider is if you want to bring the county back in to work on updating the goals and priorities.
Hey, this is Jacob. One of the things, just for Brian, I know since you weren't in some of the previous meetings, some of this is stemming from trying to give Elaine measurable and quantifiable goals, you know, to make it far easier for us to do her evaluations later on. So instead of having some nebulous goals where you could say, yes, I kind of did it, or no, you can't, the goal...
Be really good at stuff.
Yeah, the goal is to really, you know, come up with some quantifiable goals to say...
Yeah, smart goals are what we use it.
Yeah.
On just about every performance evaluation in industry, so I get it 100%.
You know, it's not...
But thanks for the clarification.
It won't be perfect, but it's, you know, that's the attempt at least.
I understand the aim, anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, because we do need something that's, you know, for Elaine, and, you know, I'm, you know, I, I don't understand why we go into closed session for something as private as someone's personal evaluation for someone like a city manager that's not an elected official, and then have a citizen turn around and FOIA the evaluation and have it part of the public to, you know, the public view. I don't, why are we going into closed session? I don't understand that. And I don't understand what the intent was of that, but we need to change the evaluation process, obviously, for something, you know, like Brian said, and Commissioner Bryson said, measurable, specific, attainable, you know, time-based, all that, all that stuff needs to be in the evaluation. And Bob, I have a question.
Yes.
Bob, are you there?
Yes.
So when someone puts in a FOIA request, why aren't we charging them for it? Because it takes valuable city time to...
We do have a fee structure for responding to FOIA requests. We have a labor fee, which is set by state law, and we have a per copy page fee. I think the clerk could comment on that.
Can't we, can't we come up with our own fee structure? Because to me, it should be a flat fee of $500 to start.
No, we're governed by statutes that say we're allowed to charge the hourly rate of the lowest capable employee to manage the request. We're allowed to charge for sorting between privileged and non-privileged information, and then we can set a policy on how much we charge per page. And then we reduce that to our own city policy, our FOIA cost policy, and we, and we implement it. We have to be very careful that the FOIA process is not perceived as being a deterrent due to money. So the state law is very sensitive about how you charge and how much you charge. Clerk and Elaine, we have a, we have a policy in place, right?
Yes, we do.
And we haven't established, we haven't established page cost, and we, we charge the labor rate of the lowest qualified person, I think, right?
That's correct, but the FOIA has to take a minimum amount of time to incur that charge. So many of them are emailed now, so no charges incurred because we don't meet that timeframe.
Right.
This is, Hendrick, can I make a comment? The reason why we go into closed session, because it's the city manager's choice to have her evaluation done either in open session or in closed session. It's in the charter.
Well, it's broader than that, Lisa, too. It's, under the Open Meetings Act, there's a listing of 10 reasons why you can go in closed session. The first one is, is for performance evaluation under 15268, and the choice on whether or not your evaluation is done in open session or closed session is up to the person being evaluated. They can make a decision to be in open session, or they can make a decision to be in closed session. The reviewing body does not control that decision.
But what's the point of going into closed session when it can be FOIAed and put into public view anyway?
The closed, the closed session is designed to allow for openness and frankness on the issues beyond what's in the writings.
And even public, people's files can be FOIAed. It's not just her evaluation. Any employee's evaluation can be FOIAed.
You know, you know, I have been round and round on this, on this evaluation process for municipal city managers and clerks, and my most recent success on this was I actually put in a process in the community where every November, the board meets with both the, we have a, we have an engaged clerk and an engaged city manager. They meet with those individuals and they set forth into a written resolution, the goals and objectives of each for the, for the next year. Then they pass that in December, and then they go through the year. Then when they do it the next year, they pull out that list of goals and objectives, and they see how the performance went, and then they revise the goals and objectives going forward for the next year. And therefore, it's been semi-successful because then it's always measurable. You're always, you're always in a position of measuring the performance by, by having input on both sides. What are the goals and objectives for 2021? What do we want you to focus on? What do we want you to achieve? And what do you think you should achieve? Then we reduce those to writing, and then we use them the next year to measure the success. And it's, we've been doing it for five years in one community. It's worked out very well.
Bob?
Okay.
Bill Claussen. Bob? Our attorney?
Hi, Bill.
Yeah. Closed session, we go in closed session, so it's, it's private. Why can't, how can they FOIA closed session?
They're not, they're not FOIAing the closed session minutes. They're FOIAing the public records. And that's why, that's why I did it, do it different in, different in the other communities, because I make, I make the goals and objectives of the, of the, of the two entities into a, into a published resolution. So I have a resolution at the end of every year that says the goals and objectives of the, of the city manager are as follows for the year 2021. And then we list them out, and we start with the basics, all of the statutory requirements of the, of the, of the job, and then we go into the listing of specifics that the, that the boards and the councils have developed in conjunction with meeting with the, with the manager, and then we use that as our baseline for next year's evaluation. And therefore, therefore, these, all these documents where, you know, you, you, you have check marks and everybody's giving their input, we don't have that in the public record. All we have is the resolution of the goals and objectives for the next year, which are the outgrowth of a meeting. And the meeting can be in closed session.
Yeah, that's much better.
We can talk about that if you want to put that as an agenda item. I really feel pretty strongly about how that process should work. I have not said much over the last couple of years on your process, which I think is cumbersome and doesn't get to the meat of the issues. It's, in my opinion, it, it, it may not be doing what we want it to do, so I'd be happy to speak on that issue if you want to put that as an agenda item in December.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do that, or whenever we meet in December, if we meet in December. And...
Do we need to make a motion to add that agenda item? Or can it just be added?
No, you can just, you can just ask the, ask the manager to do that.
Just making sure. Thanks. This is Commissioner Ross.
We'll make a note of it and make sure that it's on the next agenda for discussion.
And, and is it a matter of public record to, I mean, if somebody puts in a FOIA request that's costing us taxpayers dollars, why is their name confidential? Bob?
You know, the, the FOIA request itself, once it is, once it is received by the, by the city, that document becomes a public record itself.
Claussen, there you go. Okay. Good to know. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business, 10E, request for proposals, IT services.
Our contract with High Tech is coming to an end. We're in the window where we have to notify them what we are planning on doing. We could either renew our contracts with them or go out for bids again. This is the same bid document that we used last time, so I would be looking for a motion either to continue on with High Tech for a specified term and negotiate a contract with them, or to go out for bids again.
I make a motion to go out for bids again for our IT services.
Support, Bill Claussen.
Okay. And I need, we're going to have to do a roll call vote right on this again.
Commissioner Claussen. Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to go to the added 10F, the changes for the chamber for the maritime Christmas event permit.
Laura is on the line if you would like to have her give a little summary of what it is she's requesting.
Hi, Laura.
Hi there.
You want to talk a little bit about what?
Sure.
What you want to do again for maritime, or for, yeah, maritime Christmas?
Okay, so there's, there's two items that we're kind of asking for, or hoping that you can consider. One of it is the use of Heritage Square Park. That wasn't in the initial permit, but what we'd like to do, the journey begins for maritime Christmas at River Rectine Zone. So visitors will pick up their goodie bag, which has information related to the event in the businesses in town. So what we'd like to do is have people that worked really hard for their floats for the parade, now that we've canceled it, we'd like to give them the opportunity to park their floats there. They can light them up. A lot of them have their own power sources, and we think that will really add a little bit more to the event. So Heritage Park, Square Park was not on the initial permit. Drake Park was, so we'd like to add Heritage Park if possible. That being said, we also, after brainstorming a lot with our committee, we've been up and down with this event. We don't want to cancel the event. We think it's very, very important for the city, for the businesses, for visitors, for residents. All of the businesses are very well-equipped at protecting visitors. They've, they've been enforcing the mask law, distancing, limitations to people that come in, and now with these restaurants only being allowed to do carryout, we brainstormed a lot last morning, and we spoke with Elaine, we spoke to Mike Ittrich about the possibility of bringing some picnic tables to Drake Park, which is definitely a possibility. But then in addition, we'd like to bring in three fire pits that we could set up in Drake Park for people to kind of congregate, stay warm. We don't know how the weather's going to be. We kind of want it as a possibility. Of course, if it's a snowstorm or rainstorm, it's not going to happen, but we're looking for opportunities that we can talk to the businesses and the restaurants and say, hey, the chamber's working hard for you. We're trying to make, you know... for you. We're trying to make, you know, give opportunities for people to take carryout, go to the park. Um, they do this in Denver, they do this in Aspen. I know we're not Aspen or Vail, or, you know, but, um, it is winter here, and, um, we're just looking to help our businesses.
This is Bill Clawson. Does the Chamber have any, uh, insurance policies on the fire pit?
We, we have insurance policy that covers, um, it's a blanket policy that exempts the city, I don't know, I think it's a million dollars, but it was submitted with the initial permit.
I actually talked to our agent, Steven Saaf, earlier today about this, and he said that it would definitely be covered under our existing policy, and as well as it would be covered under the Chamber's policy. He said it's something that quite a few cities are doing, and it's really not anything above and beyond what our coverage already is.
And somebody's gonna be, somebody's gonna be managing it to, to keep the fire going and make sure that people aren't playing around it?
We will have, um, we are going to, one thing that we will have, our buckets full of water, um, close by. Um, there will be somebody that will be monitoring it. We will not have, like, if you're asking if there's gonna be, like, you know, a fire, you know, fire department person, no. But, um, there will be volunteers that will be working the event throughout the day. Um, so yes, we will have somebody that will be assigned to that area.
Thank you.
Um, Lisa Hendrick, I got a couple of questions. Um, did you guys consider a virtual parade like St. Clair's doing?
I thought St. Clair's was canceled.
No, they're doing a virtual now.
Uh, no, actually, I just spoke with Warren, uh, today, and he said that due to a lack of interest, it's been canceled.
Right. Well, that doesn't mean we couldn't have done it. I mean, we had everything set up. Uh, it would have been at least something for the kids. Um, I guess that's the, that's the sad part.
With maritime Christmas, I know it was tough to cancel, um, maritime Christmas, but we are looking for ways to bring Santa to town still. Um, so there may be a, an opportunity for Santa to come cruising through the streets, um, on that day, but also Santa will be available in two locations on the fifth. Um, we've, we've talked to one of our Santas who will be at the Mariner, and we are, um, providing safe, safe distancing from Santa, um, and the children, um, and so that's already kind of squared away. And then he will also be at, um, the Marine City Fish Company. So, from twelve o'clock to four o'clock, Santa will be in Marine City on the fifth.
Um, would it be better instead of having buckets of water to have some fire extinguishers?
This could be a possibility. Sure.
Well, I just want to make it safe, I mean...
Have water, we could have whatever, whatever the commission, you know, would like. I'm sure our committee would be more than happy to support that.
I, I think they could probably contact the fire department and find out what their recommendation would be.
Yeah, because I mean, you have to have somebody start this fire for people. And then, you know, who's gonna do that? And I, I just want to make sure nobody gets burned and nobody has any issues, and I'm just trying to make it safe. And I think extinguishers might be a little bit better than trying to just do a bucket of water.
Okay. We could do, actually, we can do both. Um, these particular fire pits are nice because they do have the cover. And I know that looking at some of the fire ordinances, especially for, you know, home use and stuff, I know that they have to have some type of a cover protection, so these do. Um, but yeah, we're, I, I'm more than happy to, I, I have three fire extinguishers. I can make sure that the fire department is okay with them, and I could have those close by.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, then, um, I am going to need a motion to modify the maritime Christmas events to include, um, adding Heritage Park and, um, the addition of, uh, fire pits in Drake Park and the picnic tables and...
This is Jacob Bryson. I'll make a motion, we modify the, uh, event permit as presented.
Support, Bill Clawson.
Okay, we have a motion of support. I need, um, a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
All right, we don't have anything that's removed from the consent agenda, so we're gonna go on to city manager's report. Elaine?
It's been a busy week for me, uh, dealing with a lot of the COVID stuff and obviously ever-changing, it seems like, trying to keep everyone on their toes and changing the rules all the time. Um, didn't help with the power outage on Monday either. I was able to attend the Scotts meeting virtually, and I've been working with Joe Moran and Mike Ittrich on a kayak launch, uh, grant, which is due December eighteenth, so, uh, it's something that we are going to need a resolution of support from commission on, uh, which could occur either December third or seventeenth. Uh, there has been some conversation and questions about canceling any of the upcoming meetings because of holidays or COVID. As you know, we are in this thirty-day bubble of, uh, the newest plan from the health department that we can't meet in public. So, the meeting on December third might be one that we could consider canceling. Uh, the meeting on the seventeenth is the week before Christmas. Uh, the next meeting after that is January seventh, which is a week after New Year's. Normally, uh, we do cancel one of those meetings because of the holidays, and I guess I would just kind of look to see what the board might think about canceling any of those meetings.
So, you wanted, um, you're thinking about doing December third?
I think December third is the one that really makes the most sense because it's in this thirty-day bubble.
Right, right.
And like I said, the other meetings are both a week from the holidays, and, and with COVID, most people aren't traveling, so I don't think it's gonna be much of an issue. Um, we do have this resolution for the kayak launch with the grant application due on the eighteenth that we could do at the meeting on the seventeenth. And then, uh, with the RFP that we're putting out for, uh, the two sixty South Parker, that's scheduled for January seventh. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but canceling the December third meeting might make, um, sense. We don't really have a lot coming up on the agenda right now, so there isn't anything pressing that I have coming down the pipeline. Um, the other issue is, of course, that we need to get someone appointed for the position to fill the vacancy, and that would be by December nineteenth, which we would be able to do that at the December seventeenth meeting.
Right, interview and appoint, mhm. I'm good with that. Do we need to do a roll call vote for that?
Um, I, I guess see if anybody else has any, any feedback on that or availability issues for any of those three dates.
So, what do the other commissioners think about doing, um, or, uh, uh...
Canceling the December third?
Canceling December third, keeping December seventeenth. Let's just go that far. Any discussion?
I have no objections either way and available for all dates.
Is Jake, I'm fine with any of it.
Yeah, I'm fine with either.
Do I need a roll call vote?
Everything's a roll call vote.
Everything's a roll call vote. Uh, I need a motion first, so this, I'll, I'll do the motion. Um, so, I make a motion to cancel our, uh, December third meeting, which would have to be a Zoom meeting anyway, and continue with our, uh, December seventeenth meeting, and hopefully we can do that in person.
This is Jake, I'll support.
Okay, roll call vote?
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Elaine, did you have anything else for city manager?
Nope, that's it.
You're good.
Any questions?
Hmm, nope. And now we're gonna move on to, um, commissioner privilege and liaison reports. Um...
Oh, one, one other quick thing, Cheryl. I'd just like to welcome you and Brian to the board and, and certainly excited about moving forward with you guys.
Why, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Strange time. Okay, um, if you don't mind, could I start, uh, even though the mayor usually, well, no, you know what, I'm not gonna start. Uh, Wendy, do you have anything for, um, commissioner privilege?
Um, no, yes, I, I do just, I do wanna, um, kind of go back to what Laura Scatia was bringing up about, um, maritime Christmas. You know, we, the committee, we met this morning, actually, we've met a few, twice this week, um, because we were really, we really did not want to cancel maritime Christmas. The parade, it was, it was even a struggle for us to cancel the parade. Um, but maritime Christmas, you know, we felt that we could, um, you know, pull that off and make it a, uh, still make it a, a safe event. But, you know, we, we are gonna need the cooperation of the people who do attend the event. And, um, you know, I think it can just be fun. I did, you know, Lord knows that we need some fun and we need some, uh, you know, some festive cheer in the town. So, um, everybody come on out and support, um, and I think we'll have some fun. So, that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, and welcome, Brian, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Bill Claussen, Commissioner Claussen, anything?
Uh, just, there was discussion at the planning commission about the, um, uh, road, that temporary road going out to Tin Road for the new, uh, condominium they want to do there on Metropolis. So, uh, he kind of was, uh, saying that he, he, he put the road in, uh, gravel or temporary road, but he was, still hadn't get anything confirmed. And that was with Jay Folsky. Uh, otherwise, uh, everybody have a good Christmas and, uh, safe holiday and try to be safe and wear your masks.
Thank you. Um, Lisa, Commissioner Hendrick, anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, I'd like to welcome Brian also. Uh, you're gonna have fun on here. Um, one thing I want to stress again is I hope that we continue with open government and fairness to the public. Um, I was a little concerned, uh, with people with FOIA requests. Those things are very important. There's a lot of things that people need requests. Those things are very important. There's a lot of things that people need to understand government, and we need to be open and fair with them. Um, and I hope that we're not gonna try to pursue anything to make it difficult for people to understand how government operates. Um, that would be in the worst interest of people right now is to make it harder. We're supposed to make it easier for them to obtain information and know how things work. And, um, I think also anybody new should brush up on our charter, brush up on the FOIA laws, brush up on the Open Meetings Act and all those good old things in there because there's a lot of good information to help people. And my only other question is on the Metropolis thing, if we're gonna be canceling meetings, is that gonna be another one, um, that you're gonna deal with before the end of the year, or is that gonna go over into the new year?
Uh, we're still waiting to get information, so I won't have the answer for you yet.
Okay. I just want to make sure because I think that, again, is another, um, important one. Hopefully, we can get through this mess and we can get back to public meetings because I think that, again, uh, those people need to be involved. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Bryson?
Um, nothing, except Brian, welcome. Welcome to the party. And Cheryl, you know, congratulations on moving up in the world.
Thanks, Jake.
Uh, Commissioner Ross, do you have anything? Uh, Commissioner Privilege is your opportunity to talk about, um, whatever you feel is necessary to bring up at city commission.
Just thanks for, uh, having me and putting up with me for this meeting, and, uh, yeah, thanks for the welcome, the warm welcome. Very excited to be here.
Good, we welcome you. Well, I am excited to announce that Santa Claus is coming to town. I, um, was on the phone all morning, and thank goodness, uh, we have some great people that are helping, um, bring Santa, even though we're not gonna have a parade. Santa is going to be, uh, going down every single street in Marine City on Tuesday, December first, which was our original, uh, parade date. Um, we're gonna start at six o'clock PM on Union Street, and, uh, Santa is going to be sitting in the back of a Mustang convertible. Uh, we're gonna have a police escort, and we're gonna have a DPW truck behind us to make sure that we're, you know, nice and safe in there. Um, and the kids, the grandkids, you know, all of our residents, all of our citizens can wave to Santa from the warmth of your own home. If you want to come down to the street level and stand outside and wave to Santa, you can. If you have anyone that, um, uh, any child that wants to give Santa a letter, or, you know, their Christmas list or whatever, you know, he's available for that, too. Um, so, uh, we will be doing that once again on Tuesday, December first, starting at six o'clock, um, starting on Union Street. And, um, it should only take about an hour and a half-ish for us to go through town. Um, we're gonna hit every street, like I said. So, um, put your lights on, get your Christmas lights out, and welcome Santa to town. I think that that's gonna be a great way to, um, um, you know, start the Christmas season. Um, we've got maritime Christmas coming up, and, uh, I also want to just remind everybody that, um, we're in this, we're in this, uh, lockdown mode again. Please, please, there's still so many stores that are open, there's still so many restaurants doing carryout, you know. Please, when you come into town, make a phone call, get carryout from your local place. There's several, uh, businesses that are open for that. Um, I know it's limited hours, but, um, you know, now more than ever, our local businesses need, um, our, our, our support. Um, and with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
Bill Clawson, motion to adjourn.
Support, Brian Ross.
Okay, all in favor? Do we need a roll call vote for that?
Yes.
I can do one. Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you, everyone, for, um...